Tawnytown Plan Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand for the pledge of the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect the members that are present. Commission members should have received the draft minutes of January 7th, 2019. Is there any correction or additions to those minutes?
I see none.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor are accepting the draft minutes of January 7th, 2019. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Karen, thank you. Delegations and action items for tonight. First item on the agenda is presentation of preliminary site plans for an oxy crematory service at 8 Mill Avenue. Jim, would you start us off, please?
Sure. You guys saw the concept for this a couple of months ago. The preliminary follows along that same path. The idea is to raise the existing brick building on the site and replace it with a new building that'll essentially look like a, more or less, a residential garage, slightly off of the footprint of the original building. So, Bill Brangle is here as the developer surveyor, and he did the site plan. One thing, just a little different, the site plan does include the elevation renderings that are up there on the board that the concept plan didn't show you, so, and of course, there was a copy of that in your packet as well. So, we've received comments from a number of agencies and some no comment letters from a few agencies already, so, the review is already underway, but, you know, we still have some approvals to get through before we're in a position where we can approve the preliminary plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brangle if he wants to get into a little more detail on it.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
A little chillier tonight. So, let's see. The storm drain is one thing that you had mentioned before. I've done a little bit of research into that, and unfortunately, the line that runs behind there that's parallel with the railroad tracks, that manhole that's close by is higher in elevation than the inlet beside our building, and water does not run uphill. The slope of that line behind is only at 1%, so I don't think I can even tie directly to that line angled behind the building. The other thing that comes to mind is, what's there currently is a terracotta pipe, okay? And that building was built in 1900, and that terracotta pipe was fine until they tried to tear down the building in between. That's when they damaged it. And the contractor that was, that did that replaced the section he damaged with HDPE, which is that, it's the black, like, looks like corrugated plastic, okay? Pretty tough stuff. So, what I have done, what I have done different on the plan this time, I, there's a profile down there, and on that profile, I've specified to replace the terracotta that remains under the brick building right now, when we tear that building down, to replace that terracotta with the HDPE, back to the inlet. So, number one, that'll be stronger, and it's plastic, and, you know, plastic doesn't break down or anything. And the architect has specified an alternate footer situation, because I am not able to get in there and find the diameter of the pipe. I've spoken with the contractor that tore down the adjoining building. They don't have any invoices for pipe size that they put in or anything. He did show me pictures that he had from his cell phone, which clearly showed some HDPE put in and the terracotta running underneath of the brick building. So, I still don't know the size. If it's an 18-inch pipe, it'll clear the footers, or the footers will clear the pipe. If it's bigger than 18 inches, then we have to go to an alternate footer design, which the architect has on the plan.
With the lentils.
Yes. Essentially, yes. Reinforced lentils.
Jim, does the city, I thought the city had to use concrete green tiles?
We have been accepting HDPE for the last couple of projects. The draft specification manual has noted that the city intends to accept HDPE with the, what we're accepting it now, but the manual hasn't been officially adopted with that amendment by the council yet. But Meads Crossing is using HDPE. We've had other site plans use the same, same pipe, so it's met with our engineer's approval, so, yeah.
Landscaping plan was one of the comments. I have completed a landscaping plan. That's sheet two in your packet. The county requires Class A buffer between those two properties, because it's against the residential use, because those buildings that front on Mill Avenue are used for residential purposes. The only problem that I have with that Class A screening is that it calls for, I don't remember offhand how many, but major deciduous tree. At least, you know, one per so many units has to be a major deciduous tree, which would be like an oak or a maple, a very large tree, okay? The problem is that the part of this site that adjoins those buildings used for residential purpose is paved currently. It's all pavement. And where we have proposed to put in some parking for the crematorium, we can do a saw cut, make an island, but my concern with a large deciduous tree going in a 10-foot island with pavement all around it is, in seven to 10 years, you're gonna have roots destroying the pavement. So, I have not resubmitted this plan yet through the county, but I dropped the major deciduous down to a minor deciduous. So, it's just a smaller tree. The rest of it's shrubbery.
Plus, my sewer lines back there in that blacktop.
Your sewer line is in the blacktop?
Yes, it goes out the back of them houses.
Okay.
So, my sewer line's out there also. The trees is, really wouldn't be acceptable.
Okay. Should we remove the trees completely?
I would hope so.
Okay.
Jim, comments on that, or Claire? Not to put you on the spot, but...
It's, when it comes down to being reviewed by John Bowman, the forest conservation and landscape specialist at the county, he's, he will not be able to approve it if it doesn't match exactly what's called for in the landscape manual. He and I have chatted already. We do have the, you know, discretionary authority to approve it without his approval letter. I will look, I will contact him again and inquire about any variance process that might be in place that might apply to situations like this, where you've got, you know, pavement basically on the surrounding site and the whole site. I don't know if, if there is a variance process, it may be very cumbersome, I really don't know, but we do have the ability to modify, you know, what Mr. Bowman's comments are. So, he is not, he's not a signatory on the plans. So, we do try to get all of those county bureaus and agencies to submit approval letters before we approve something typically, but we're not obligated to do that. So, I guess, short version, we do have a little wiggle room with it.
You need someplace to put the trees. I let you put them in my backyard, just to get rid of them.
Now, I had a utility locating company out, and they didn't mark any sanitary lines running through my site.
It's, it's, comes out the back of them houses and shoots across back there underneath the blacktop, and then comes back to the street.
Okay, maybe, I don't know if there's any way you and I can meet up out there and you can show me, because if it's something that I need to show on the plan as being under there...
Exactly where they are underneath there, but I know the tree that's over there at that weigh scale...
Right.
...is already giving me root problems.
Oh, okay, well, that should be well off the property, then.
But that, it comes out and comes over and comes up.
Right, well, that's an example of why I don't want to put a major tree, a major deciduous tree, in a little landscaping island.
So, we're still, we'll be waiting from the county for a letter on that, one way or the other?
And I'll, I'll touch base with Mr. Bowman as well and see if he has any, any recommendations as to what might go in there that would be less likely to present issues for the...
I mean, I have his initial letter, and I have the plan. I was just waiting for a few utilities and a few other things to be able to put on before I send it back through, but I will be submitting it to him very shortly, and I'm sure he'll have another comment letter following. If there's something that you would like me to specifically show on there before I send it in, I will certainly do that.
Jim, any comments?
I, I'd suggest keeping some sort of screening in there. I think, I think we'd like to get as close as we can to satisfying the county code, you know, within the limitations of that little area where pavement will be removed, if, you know, if we can get some smaller shrubs and, and, you know, something not, not like a giant arborvitae, but something, you know, evergreen that's columnar.
What I have now specked is a mixture. There's a couple of evergreens that'll be six to 10 feet, and then a couple of smaller shrubs that are evergreen, but they're, they don't have needles, they have leaves, and they're smaller. And then a couple of the minor trees, which are roughly 10, 10 to 12 deciduous, 10 to 12-foot deciduous trees.
I think, I think we want to keep, you know, as much of a vegetative buffer there as, as we realistically can.
Okay, agreed. Agreed, everyone? Agree? Okay.
I have a question, and two.
In reference to the shrubbery?
No.
Okay, I'll come back to you then.
Okay.
Continue on then.
All right. The only other changes from the last time I was here are essentially I have addressed comments from the county. If you would like, I can enumerate all that stuff, or...
I don't think that's necessary at this point in time.
Yeah.
I guess, the only one thing I have is, and that was because of one of the comments, is there's no deed to that paper alley, right?
Okay.
So, how is that being addressed to answer to the comments?
All right, now, I included in your packets, you've got this little eight and a half by 11 sheet?
Yes.
Okay. Now, this is not from a title abstract. I am not a title attorney. Okay, I'm a land surveyor. Okay, but from the best of what I can figure out, if you can, if you can see there, the area that's green, of course, is the property that we're developing. Do you need a, I have an additional copy.
We're good. We're good. There it is.
Okay. Yeah, the green area is the, the lot where we want to put the crematorium. Now, the blue area was all one parcel back in, I can't even, it's too small. Do I have a date? 1877. Then somewhere between then and now, the yellow piece, where the little yellow borderline is, runs around, okay, and you can see that goes all the way back and touches the green one. The yellow one was Tawnytown Grain and Supply Company. Okay, that was in 1976. Then, in 2007, the two red areas were sold to, I think it's Skills, S-K-I-L-E-S, Skills LLC?
Skiles.
Skiles?
Skiles.
All right. And as you can see, what was sold does not go all the way over and touch our property like the blue original deed did.
Isn't that the city alley down to there, though?
There is an alley there.
That's the city alley, right, Jim?
Now, this is the interesting thing. The, the parcel that's not shaded, that's down against Mill Avenue...
The white.
The white one?
Yes.
Calls for, it gives its distance back to the east side of an alley, then it goes 12 feet to the west side of an alley, goes out to Mill, Mill Avenue, then goes 12 feet to the east side and runs to the top. The, the piece next to it, the, the blue one that's left, that only has blue, that one does the same thing. They describe going to the east side of an alley, and then it continues to the west side of an alley. And of course, the two properties that Durborough purchased that have the red stop at the alley. The best I can tell from the deeds is that it was one of those alleys or paved areas that was used as an alley by many people, and just has sort of, it's, it's there, and some of the people own over it, some of them don't. Well, actually, someone does. It would be the heirs to, who's the blue? George Clayball, to Tobias Eckenroad in 1887. So, the piece that, where that inlet is located, from the best that I can tell, belongs to the heirs of Eckenroad, Tobias Eckenroad. Now, if it's been in use for public use by the town for however long, I mean, can be...
It's been way back.
Yeah.
Way back. Well, that was, that was used by the town back when I was in school, back in the 50s.
Well, Jim, or Jay, what do we need to do to address that, other than, do we need to make sure we have easements, or is it, what do you suggest?
Well, you know, we've dealt with this all over, and forget it's an alley, think of it like a sidewalk, okay? Because that's how we deal with sidewalks, is that while we can't fix the whole thing at one time, because this is beyond fixable here, it's beyond his power to fix the alley, because they only touch part of it, if you're concerned about the alley portion, there isn't anything really we can make them do, because you only own the red, right?
Right, the red and the green.
So, they never took title to the point where they could give you an easement over the portion where there is an alley. That makes, I mean...
Yes, correct.
You see what the story is, is if they took title all the way over to the green, we could say, "Give me an alley like we would a sidewalk. Give me an easement for a future alley," or however we're gonna deal with it. But he doesn't have title enough to give that. It would be, well, I guess it would either be Skiles, or it would be to Grain and Supply, somebody back there had title.
Skiles, Skiles owned...
The yellow?
The yellow.
So, Skiles, you see what I'm saying? It's beyond this.
Yeah.
Beyond theirs to fix.
The crazy thing is, Skiles owned both parcels that Durborough has now, but the other parcel, they only owned to the east side of the alley.
Right.
Didn't go all the way to the west side. Now, the miss utility map, I found this pretty interesting, shows a street there called Fourth Street.
Yeah, I tried to match that up, too, from in here.
Yeah, so...
I couldn't find it.
Somewhere...
And the city doesn't have any title. I mean, there's no title to the city, so perhaps the public has an easement by prescription, because it's been used for 20 years or more, but the question then, you'd go to the town, is who needs to make improvements on that, if there would be improvements need to be made?
Who plows the snow?
Assume the town does. We don't know that for a fact.
I don't know that we do.
There may just not be done at all.
No, nobody plows it. I plow it mostly, because I gotta get the tenants in.
So, as to this applicant, there's nothing they can do to fix the alley?
Basically, basically, that's an issue we don't need to address.
Yeah, you can't hold them accountable to it, because they can't give you what they don't have.
Yeah, but the land in town about like this.
Oh, yeah.
They have other alleys like this.
This is what the third one we've dealt with.
Yeah. Same situation.
This does pose another issue, and this was one of the comments from Clay Black, Development Review. He was questioning what was happening off the property, because I showed the limit of disturbance going around the inlet, as my intent was to replace all the terracotta with HDPE.
Well, the true intent was, when Grain Supply bought the two houses, that was added space, and that yard all the way up to the back of my houses was grain supplies. But in the middle of me buying the houses, Bill Stoneseifer died, and they didn't take a lot of the land off that they were supposed to, so I got it. And that's how I got as much as I got, because the people that I was buying from died, where they would have been all yours, except the houses. Thank goodness.
Any other comments, Forrest?
Other than the, the storm drain, we can always excavate, saw cut the pipe inside the property line, and do HDPE up to the property line, and then leave four or five feet of terracotta, so that we're not working off of our property.
I mean, I think that that is probably something we're gonna work with on CDM, and I know Clay Black wants to show the limit of disturbances, I'm sure, but...
Yes.
No one has a better title than, than, no one can come say that they have a better title than anyone else, right? And so, if it's four feet of terracotta that are gonna be the problem down the road, it would be, you're gonna fix that even though you're off the property, and maybe it's in the public right away. I think you'll work that out with the engineer.
Makes perfect sense to me to just, to do it.
Right, because nobody's gonna be able to come in to you and say, "You're trespassing on my property." Because they have the same problem the city does. And you need to have it fixed, or else you're gonna have the choke point. It'll be great until it caves in.
Right.
Okay, and then, George, you have a question?
Once you get that building razed, is there no chance that you can get around the corner of that building and go down the railroad side on the outside, so that you're not underneath the building?
Well, sure, that we can do. There is enough fall...
Why don't you do that?
...to run an entirely new line.
Why don't you do that?
Well, the main, there's two, two reasons. One, expense, but number two, probably more importantly than just expense, is that will definitely kick us over 5,000 square feet of disturbed area, and as soon as that happens, I'm now looking at stormwater management, you know, you name it, we now have...
Are you going to add some of the real heavy weight on that line?
Well, I was hoping to get with the town engineer to discuss this, and apparently, he's mailed something to me that I haven't gotten yet, so we'll try and get that worked out this week. I have on my profile to encase it in concrete...
What you're thinking about building on it?
I don't really see it as that much of an issue. A couple, a couple of reasons is, well, number one, the terracotta's there, it's been there for, well, the building that's there now was built in 1900, so that pipe's been there over 100 years, and it was fine until they ran over it with a bulldozer knocking down a building, okay? So, replacing it with the HDPE is a much stronger solution, and a longer lasting solution. And the other reason it doesn't concern me is that if we do it correctly, and this is where I need an engineer to work with me on this, if we do it correctly, everything will be fine. There's a shopping center on Reisterstown Road that has a stream running underneath of it. You know, you drive across the bridge, and there's the stream, and right next to you is the buildings, and it's all these stores. And, you know, there's a number of places around the county with similar type of situations. Not that it's an ideal situation, but I think that if we do it correctly, we'll be fine.
Well, I think I noticed in here where you're required to have the floor six inches thick, right?
Something like that, yeah. That's gonna be on the architectural...
And that'd have rebarbed in, too, right?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Okay, so that, and wasn't the, I don't wanna call them accelerators, the...
Yeah.
Whatever they're called, those two items, that was 7,000 pounds?
Pretty hefty. That's why the extra reinforcement in the floor.
Okay, so somebody figured the pounds per square inch on that floor, right?
Yeah, that's out of my department.
Okay.
Okay. That would be on the architectural end, or, or the design for the, whatever they're called.
Right.
The crematoriums.
Right, right.
You know.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're pretty hefty, from what I understand.
Well, the night is just the presentation of preliminary site plan. How many more letters do we need, or are still outstanding? Quite a few, or...
I have that in my folder over here on the chair.
I don't have my, my checklist of comment letters in front of me.
They have me a minute to find it.
Should be. While he's looking, is there any other questions that we would want to bring out, or any request to his plans?
I was wondering about that drain. I think that's a good solution to it. Maybe I oughta put in there somewhere that extra four feet.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
That'll be the stopping point.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
We'd like to see that the extra, the four feet that's not on your property to be included in your project.
Okay. Okay. So, Clay Black, one of his comments was, "Who owns that?" Now, as I understand it, that falls under the category of, "We can worry about it, or you don't have to worry about it, because ultimately, you guys have the authority here over Clay Black's comment." So, just, just kinda toss that out there.
Yeah, he's got good comments.
He does.
Yeah. So, so the point is, you're gonna handle it.
And all of, I don't think there was anything of his that I couldn't address readily, except that one.
So, Jim, what are we looking back, coming back next month for approval?
Potentially, yes.
We submitted to 22 agencies. I have received back... I've received back 11, so I've received half. And the ones that I haven't received anything from are, like, roads, operations, and traffic, it's not relevant to them, but you have to submit it anyway initially. Facilities, the zoning administrator for Carroll County, it's not relevant to him. So, that's the, I haven't gotten anything back from the fire chief, and that I should have.
Definitely should.
Yeah. So, that's one I have to, I guess I make a follow-up call, but that's, that's where we are, and I've been able to address every comment, with the exception of the ownership piece that we discussed, and the, the large deciduous tree.
All right, so hopefully, then, next month, we can be on the agenda again for approval. Let me ask, is there any comments from the floor in reference to this? Okay, everyone up here satisfied with this? George? Let me look one more at the time. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Carroll County Bike and Pedestrian Ma... Okay, next item is the Carroll County Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. Claire, would you, uh, get us started? Yep?
Hi, Claire Stewart, Carroll County Planning. I actually happen to have a larger map. I think you'll have the small map, but I can hang this up if you want, or I can just pass it around.
Just put it up.
Well, he's taking that down. I'm talking this one off.
I had it amended, yeah. There it is. Come on. I don't own a bike. That's a good thing. Not with pedals, anyway.
Right. Hello, I'm here before you today. The county is looking for certification of chapters three and four of the Bike Ped Master Plan. We're coming to a final draft. And the text in front of you and this map should look relatively familiar. I believe it was in the spring of 18, you had, um, accepted both documents. We have only made one change since then. Jim asked that I, um, make a change to table 3-21, Ballinger Park and then Piney Run Creek. I changed the, um, the trail, uh, the pavement unpaved. I changed it to, "To be determined" for both of those. So that's the only change besides some cosmetic things that has been made since you, um, had accepted the chapters previously. So if you have any questions, I can answer them. If not, we are just certifying that it's consistent with, the information is consistent with your comp plan.
Jim, would you step in?
Well, Claire summarized it, um, very well. If, if the commission is on board with the idea, we do have a letter for, for you to sign that'll go back to the county, basically saying that, that tonight's meeting, the, the commission certifies the Tony Town portion of the plan. Unfortunately, I did not bring that up with me in my stack here, so I'll have to run down and fire a copy off.
So actually, what you're looking for is a motion from us saying that we, we certify it, we...
Yep.
Something basically like that. If somebody would like to make out a motion, we're talking about chapter three and four. And that wasn't the easiest reading chapters, let me tell you guys. So I'm looking for a motion or something here, some type of comment.
I make the motion that we certify, um, as discussed, the chapters three and four of the Carroll County Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
I second it.
I'll second that. Other discussion? Any comments from the floor?
Well, we're not familiar with this, so we don't have...
Okay.
I can't comment.
Okay, okay. All right, all those favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Who's opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is presentation of Ballinger Park Concept Plan, request for concept approval. You wanna just pull that off, Jim? Are you okay? You're okay, okay.
Has that been incorporated yet? You say yes?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Shuffle my papers here for a second.
Let's get this right in correction. Okay, whenever you're ready then, Jim.
Okay, um, I think you guys have seen some concept renderings of this before, but, as you know, Ballinger Park is intended to be kind of a passive park, a nature park. The first phase of it, um, which I've got, the, the large sheet up there on the easel includes some items that are beyond phase one, just to give you a, an overall idea of what the, the Ballinger development will hopefully ultimately look like. But the first phase items are highlighted in yellow on the large copy. And in the aerial version that was in your packet also, uh, items are, are called out as, um, either being, uh, well, a lot of them are noted as future. So anything that's not future is phase one on the aerial. There's also a, a chart for the, the phasing scope on the aerial view, so, um, phase one includes, uh, the access road and entrance and a small parking lot off of that entrance and stormwater management for that portion.
Excuse me, also where?
On the, um...
Say that, I didn't catch what you said.
Okay, um, so the, the first phase will have an access point and entrance towards the, uh, existing dwelling that's at the edge of the woods there on Fringer Road.
Okay, Fringer Road, okay.
So phase one's gonna include that access point, a small parking lot, and also a grass overflow parking area and a, um, a stormwater facility to serve that area. It also will include, um, a, a trail that'll basically go down through the woods, run more or less along the, uh, the stream, along Piney Creek, and then loop back, um, to the point of, of beginning. We did just hear back, um, we'd been in touch with CDM about the trail, the trail surface, uh, for that one with the idea that this is supposed to be kind of a natural park. There was some resistance to the idea of that being a blacktop trail. On the one hand, it was initially thought that a blacktop trail would see more use from a larger variety of people, but that sort of conflicts with the nature park idea to some extent, or at least to some people. So, um, in, in rethinking that, uh, you know, right now, we're leaning towards a, um, a gravel trail. CDM Smith reached out to one of their other offices who has, uh, some expertise in park design. And, uh, the individual there has recommended a combination of, of gravel trail and potentially boardwalk sections where there are, um, lower and wet areas that will need to, you know, have the trail cross so that we won't have, um, washouts and things like that of the gravel. So, again, still just at the concept phase right now, but that's what the first phase would entail. Future phases would include the observatory that the Westminster Astronomical Society has been, telling us they would like to locate there for some time now. But the initial phase is just gonna be able to get people someplace to park and a trail to use, and hopefully we'll start to see some use of the park once that happens. So if, if this looks, um, looks, looks good, that we can move forward and, and further develop the concept, we will go ahead and do that.
So we're eliminating, or we're not going with the mulch trails, right? It's gonna be gravel and...
At this point, we're looking at gravel, yeah. And that's, that's not locked in yet. If there's strong feelings towards some other surface, you know, we can still explore them. Right now is really just, you know, the, the, the very big picture stuff, you know, the, the ballpark idea of where the parking and the access drive are gonna be. And the access point is really determined largely because of the site distances that we want to achieve. You know, Fringer Road does have a number of curves along that stretch, and, um, we couldn't achieve the site distances that we needed based on the access point we've used, like for the tree plantings and things where there's a, I don't know if folks have been out there or not, but there's kind of a gravel entrance, uh, not too far past the, the farm pond that's along the, the one bend there. We couldn't get the right site distances per county roads, um, to locate the access point there. That's part of why it's moved up into the wooded area, so we'll have to do some clearing.
So we're looking, you're requesting a concept approval. So to get this on the table, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to have concept approval of the Ballinger Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Open for discussion. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name, John Perry. I'm at 3795 Fringer Road. Our house isn't on this map, but we're, we should have been. We would, as you're facing where you'd like to come in, come in off Fringer Road, we're the property to the left of it. And the gravel road that they've been using for access to get back to this property isn't town property. That's one of the people back here's property that they've just been using. So that wouldn't be a possibility to use as an access point anyhow. But anyhow, we have some concerns. When we built this, bought this lot and built our house there, there was never any chance of any development going on there because it has failed before. There was a church that was gonna build there 10 or 15 years ago, but they couldn't get access where you'd like to come in because it's a wetland. And it's still wet. If you drive out there today, there's water land on that area. So I don't know how you would get past that. Then, second thing is, when we built our house, there was not a tree on the property. The years before, we plowed and dished it and planted corn in it. But forest conservation gave us a heck of a fit because we were disturbing too much dirt. So I don't know how you guys would ever get permission to go into a woods and cut 24 parking spaces and then a road down through it to get to the observatory, and then go the whole way down through the woods with a six-foot walking path, circle around through another woods, and then come back through where you just got done planting a bunch of trees. I'd be, I, I would think that would be impossible. I can't believe that the county would ever even consider anything like that. Because I'm telling you, they really gave me a fight, and I hadn't, I told him, I said, "Look, last year it was a, it was a cornfield." "I know, but that's the rules." Well, that didn't make any sense to me. But anyhow, we have concerns about, uh, developing it, but there's no boundary. So if people come in that woods, they can walk right up to our back door where this parking, uh, walking path is gonna be. And the parking lot, you'll be able to see from our house, which right now is an open woods and a field. So we'd like to request that if you are gonna go through with it somehow, that there be a border put down, a fence of some sort, to keep people from coming over on our property. Because after the, the property comes down to my property corner, then my mother and father owns, uh, from that point all the way out to 194. So this whole thing's gonna be going down along our property on the left side. And then, um, my younger brother's a Civil War buff, and he said that the, the open field where the conservatory's supposed to go was a Civil War camp. And he said that he couldn't believe that you'd be able to get away without doing an archaeological survey of the Civil War, uh, impact of that area. Uh, we wanted to know if you were gonna put a time limit on this park. Is it gonna be like the Gettysburg Battlefield that's gonna be open from dusk till dawn? And that'll cut down on some of the riffraff going out there at night and doing things that we wouldn't want done? And then, um, we didn't know if there was gonna be dogs allowed to go up and down there. That would be another reason for a fence, because we have dogs ourself, but we have a, a fence that we keep them in most of the time. And then my parents own a farm, so we have animals, ducks, chickens, guineas and such. And then another question we came up with was, "Why do you need another park?" We already have Tony Town Memorial Park. We have a skate park up across from the senior center. And then we also have, uh, the Rod and Gun Club Park, where you have walking trails and open fields. At Memorial Park, people go down there and walk all the time. So we didn't know why you would spend more money on another park and then put it out in the rural, rural area rather than in town. That was the point, Sam.
Thank you. Jim, do you wanna address any of those points at this point? Or, I mean, the fence, I, I definitely, I think I agree with you on the fence. There should be some type of buffer there, and the fence does seem to be the right, right thing there.
I mean, those are all things that we can talk about as we, as we move a little farther into, you know, developing the project.
Does he have a list of your, uh, things?
Well, they're on, they're on the, they're on the tape.
Oh, you have the tape, okay.
I'll be reviewing that when I do the minutes and...
Thank you for your input.
So, um...
And the rest of it?
Well, as far as the, the area where the gravel drive is now, that's, right, that's part of what I believe is now the Doane property. Used to be part of the Garrett Farm, uh, but there's a, there's an access easement that was granted across there when the city bought a portion of what used to be the Garrett Farm. You know, but, but again, it, it's, you know, kind of a moot point because we can't get the sight lines, but, um, but that is a, there is an access easement across there, even though we don't own it, he simple. As far as fencing, that's certainly something that we can talk about as we get a little farther into it. You know, the, the concept and the budget did not include fencing. So that's something that we'll have to, you know, evaluate and look at cost-wise. That's a pretty long, uh, stretch for, you know, fencing that whole, that whole boundary side. You know, I'm, I'm not sure that, that other areas with hiking trails and things like that, you know, have fencing, you know, along their boundary. I'm not saying it's not, it's something we can't do, but it is a little out of the ordinary for someplace with hiking trails. Like when you go to a, a state park to hike, um, you know, I don't think it's typical that they, you know, fence in the boundary of the park, you know, where there might be houses next door. But this isn't of that scale, so it's something we can certainly talk about. Hours, dogs, things of that nature, those are all good questions and things we'll have to develop as, as we get a little farther along into it. For the most part, dogs are not allowed in the city parks. I'm not saying that doesn't mean, you know, that people don't take dogs to them, but, uh, Roberts Mill Park is the only one that I think allows dogs currently. So, but this, you know, again, being more of a, a natural park, that may be, you know, something, it may be one where we do allow dogs. That'll kind of be up to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and our Parks and Rec Director, when he sets up the rules for the, the park. I would think we would also limit the hours, um, you know, outside of perhaps special events. Eventually, if the observatory is built, um, you know, they may have viewing, uh, events that they need to be there at certain times of night to, you know, see a particular, uh, you know, event, uh, that's going on. You know, I, I know we just had the, uh, the blood moon and the, the lunar eclipse, uh, a week or so ago. And, you know, there was a certain window within which the, you know, was the best viewing time for that. So I would think that if we do start talking about limiting hours, that, you know, the unique nature of an observatory will have to be taken into consideration also that, you know, there are probably gonna be events where if there, if there's going to be an observatory, you're gonna wanna be able to use it for, you know, specific stargazing events. But I would think, I would think generally, you know, the hours would be limited. We are planning to have some lighting at the parking lot, though, um, just for security purposes. But again, I would think, you know, it, it would be probably limited to, you know, the hours of Memorial Park, if not shorter than that. So, but again, that, that's, those are all things we need to talk to as, as, as the plan progresses.
Maybe, Jim, you can tell us how we acquired the Ballinger Park? Just a short...
Well, the major piece was given to the city when the Ballinger annexation happened. So that's the piece closest to 194, uh, it was given to them at Ballinger Park. And then it was during their annexation. The, two parcels, that to Fringer Road, which would be at the top part of your map. The city bought them sometime in the past, those two. And then the latest acquisition would be the bottom large piece, which was bought, purchased from the Garrett family.
Thank you. Just one, one last thing. I know the comment was that it's kind of out in the middle of nowhere. And it currently is, I guess, uh, but keep in mind that Meads Crossing, um, you know, has been approved and is under construction now, and that's, you know, essentially right across FSK Highway from the park. So as the city grows, you know, this park is not going to be as removed or as isolated from the city as we look at it now. You know, there are gonna be a lot of homes and a lot of residents, um, you know, basically right there behind, uh, behind Farrell Gas. you know, basically right there behind, uh, behind Farrell Gas and Westminster Hydraulics and, and, um, they, they very well may be, you know, frequent users of that park, so.
Gentlemen in the back, catch your hand up. You wanna come to the podium, please?
I just had one comment. With the Garrett property, there is a, uh, right-of-way, down, one further down Fringer Road.
We, we don't own that.
Yes, sir. It's a thirty-foot ride.
You're aware, what are you referring to?
If it's between the-
Right below Lot Five.
Yeah, one, two, three, four. Yeah, between the fourth and fifth house away from the, the old farmstead. Yeah, we, we don't own that. That was not- Right, but we, we did not purchase that from the Garretts.
They didn't have title to that when, when we wanted to buy it, they didn't have title to it. And there was something, just like you heard the alley situation here, when the subdivision on the sub, didn't, something didn't happen and they weren't able to get it to us. Because that would have been what the purpose of it was for.
You were talking about right away, it was surveyed off-
Please come to the, please come to the mic and state your name.
Name's Michael Smith, thirty-four eleven Fringer Road. That, uh, right-of-way through there was surveyed off. They put, uh, off conveyances, markers in there, acceleration, deceleration lanes, the county did. So that could, that was to be used for the planetarium. Now, you put another road in up above the farm, and then you put trees in there. I'm concerned because the town, and I get the same thing from the park manager all the time. They surveyed all that. They come down on us, we have fourteen acres down in there. And you look at the aerial view, it looks like, oh, boy, that's a lot of woods we own, town does. But they don't. They just own a strip on the upper side. The other strip is ours, fourteen acres on each side of that creek is ours. We butt up against Ballinger Park. And there was so much confusion with the survey that I asked to see a copy of it because all them homes out along one ninety-four come off of our original thirty-acre plot of Mr. Cleggett's. The town says, "Oh, well, we're, we're not sure where it is." You know, "We're not sure of this and that." I said, "Well, give me a land plot." I'm still waiting for the land plot. Because they don't know themselves where Ballinger Park, how far it goes down against us. And then on the upper side that you bought from Mr. Garrett, I have no problem. But just don't think that that whole woods belong to the Garrett property because it goes the whole way up to Lot Number Eight and then goes back. So it looks like you got a lot, but you haven't got a lot. Because there's fourteen acres that comes out of that section that you're looking at an aerial view of how, of woods.
There's no reason the town can't get you the plot.
And, I've come in here three times and I've talked to the, uh, park manager.
But you finally talked to the right people?
All these people are here tonight because of the sign that was placed in front of the piece of property, and I don't even know what that, the town acquired it from some church or something. No one knows anything. They just start this and start that, and you go around in circles.
But this is the beginning of the process. That's why the sign is up, and this is a concept plan tonight to talk about the ideas that the city wants to do. And this is just the very beginning. So like the comments that the gentleman made earlier are perfect comments to, to have because the city can take that into consideration. And it's just like the crematorium you saw earlier, you were sitting here. That's in the second set of comments to move forward. But there's no reason you can't get a survey of the whole area because everything that is on that map that we're talking about-
They, they did survey it, and I, they asked for it three times, never got-
The fourth time is the charm here.
Right, we'll, we'll say that you get it.
Because there's a, there's a, a problem back where Ballinger Park butts up against us. Supposedly, there is like a quarter of an acre that town wanted me to sign off to them. And I said, "Show me the plot, I might do it." You know, right now, the boundary between Ballinger Park and the back of our property on thirty-four eleven Fringer Road has never been resolved. And now this other mess up here past the Denerman Farm, that's what it was originally called, Denerman Farm, that wooded area in there, over the years, farmers just kept dumping their junk and trash. And, and you, if you ever drove up there, it's just like a half acre of cans and tubs and junk. And if you come down on the upper side of our property, Garrett dumped hog trawls and big hog feeders in there, and all that has to be removed before you send people down in there walking. I said something to the town about, "Hey, send dumpsters out there and then have these kids that need work hours, you know, for school, throw it on the dumpsters and haul it away." You can't send people down in there. There's broken bottles, glass. I mean, you can imagine when they burnt the trash, you just dumped the trash barrels back in there with all this glass and stuff. And the deer gotta run through it and... You bought yourself a nice mess and you don't realize it until you walk it yourselves. You've got to walk that property yourselves.
We've, uh-
Because you bought yourself a mess, not just there where the church property was, but the ground that is above our fourteen acres was not used for dumping ground for years upon years. I mean, you're talking dumpsters after dumpsters of glass and machinery stuff and, and that's, you're just seeing along the road what it is. Wait till you get back in that woods and see what's back in there.
We're, we're aware of the, uh, of the dump area that's back there.
Yeah, because I, I work with the guys and, and I keep a fire trail back right down through the middle of that woods in case a fire ever is. I have all the fire trails open that are on us in case the woods catches on fire or anything else. And that's a freebie for the town.
All right, well, thank you very much.
And it's all I knew. I want a plot. I want a land plot showing me that-
We'll say, the staff will say that you get that.
Do you have his contact information? If you can make sure he has your information to get it for you. Can I address the easement issue?
Sure.
So, so everybody's clear about that easement? The Garretts didn't own it to give it to us when we wanted to buy it, because that was one of the goals. And when this was developed, it's courts us all in the county. And the county may have an easement for it, the county might. Those issues are what we get from the county. Certainly, we could talk to the county about it, but when we did approach the county back then, they're the ones that told us it wasn't properly deeded to the county when the subdivision was happened here. And-
I hate to disagree with you, but I have a land plot home that shows eight lots come off the Fringer Farm, and it shows that that lot still belongs to Fringer's farm. And the county has never retained that one. It's called suburban development.
I'm, I'm- I'm telling you what the title insurer told us, and so, that's the way that-
I have a land plot of over lots in that area.
Anyone else have any comments for us? Come to the podium, please.
My name's Josh Morningstar. I live at thirty-six eighty-five Fringer Road. This easement that you're talking about goes about twenty feet from my house. And you'll essentially be destroying my property value.
Which one are we talking about? The one that doesn't exist?
The one that I hope doesn't exist.
The one-
Yeah.
There's, I think there's, there's two one Fringer Road. There's one past the Red Brick Farm with the pond. There's one, and then there's one further up Fringer Road closer to one ninety-four. We're behind the pond.
Yeah, we're the brick rancher next to the pond.
I mean, when people move to Fringer Road, they move there for a reason. They don't want to live in town. They don't want developments. They don't want the traffic, the flow. Fringer Road is not made for the traffic. I mean, we all drive on it. It's not, I mean, are you, how are you gonna address that? If this park has to be here, why can't the access road be off of one ninety-four? Is it because you guys don't wanna pay for a turn lane? Because that's a, a very added cost.
I mean, you guys have made the comment that the people that are gonna move into the development across one ninety-four are gonna be the ones that are gonna come to use this.
Why can't you use the other parks right over there?
Make it over there, or, you know, there's twenty-one acres off the-
Parcel number two-three-one-nine, the town owns right behind the football field. There's twenty-one point four-three acres. Why can't the observatory go over there?
I mean, there's already parking lots and everything.
Bathrooms, it's set up.
Everything could go there. People bought this land over there to be away from all this.
Okay, okay. You wanna respond to that?
Well, um, I mean, the, the Ballinger family donated the initial fifty acres to the city for it to become a park, um, about twenty years ago, I think it was nineteen ninety-five. A good portion of that, basically, nearly the entire frontage on one ninety-four is within a hundred-year floodplain. So, it's, would be quite a bridge we would have to build, um, to access the park from one ninety-four. There is a, a farm lane that comes off of one ninety-four that has, um, has a bridge across the creek. And that is, I believe, a, a shared access, but it's for agricultural use. So we can't utilize that entrance and develop it, um, because it's not for agricultural use. So, um, with that in mind, uh, probably fifteen years ago, the city purchased those two properties that were available, linking the original Ballinger piece to Fringer Road so that we would have some kind of access off of a public street. So those have been owned by the city for, it was, uh, I guess when Henry Heim was mayor and Pat Neeld was city manager, so probably fifteen, eighteen years ago, the city bought those, you know, with the intent of connecting, you know, having that connection from Fringer Road to the other fifty acres of Ballinger Park. It's been in our comprehensive plan, you know, for quite some time as well, at least since nineteen ninety-seven, for that to be a park.
I was like six when that happened.
Excuse me?
I said, "I was like six when that comes in the plan." I'm just saying, people that are moving to Fringer Road are thirty, young thirty-year-olds, forty-year-olds. I mean, you know, you said this has been in the plans for nineteen ninety-seven. I mean, have anybody done, asked questions or surveyed? Do the people now that live on Fringer Road, our generation, want this? I mean, is it a desire? Has that been taken into consideration?
We've, we've, um, we certainly get public input each, every ten years when the comprehensive plan is updated. More often than not, if something isn't slated for a change in the comprehensive plan, it doesn't generate that much discussion or that much interest. If it's, "Oh, well, that's the same thing that was in the last plan," you know, folks don't usually have a whole lot to say about it. But it is, you know, we do go through a public process for the, it's, you know, Tony Town and environs, so the surrounding community, because we do have a growth area planned for the city as well, that, you know, properties within that growth area can petition the city for annexation to become part of the, part of the city, um, if they're in that growth area. And that's a, you know, a pretty major initiative. We go through every ten years and, um, we hold public hearings on it and try to get, you know, community input, not just from the city, but the surrounding area. But that's, that, that's how, I guess, it starts. And that's, you know, the opportunity for, you know, for that kind of feedback, um, when, when we go through those processes. As far as, you know, the twenty-two acres at Memorial Park, there's a, a basic plan to develop a, a multipurpose field and a small parking area, um, on part of that twenty-two acres. We did do some tree planting down by the stream on that property as well, just like we did here. It's, um, again, you know, more along the existing wood line. But, um, those were all water quality initiatives with those tree plantings. So, I, I certainly understand the concerns with, you know, with it being developed as a park. You know, what I can say at this point is, the Ballinger piece and the two parcels that tie that into Fringer Road, the city has maintained the intent is for that to be a, a passive park, a nature park for, you know, um, you know, walking trails or bicycling on trails, things like that, as opposed to developing it for sports fields. Now that, that said, we don't know for the Garrett portion yet what is gonna be developed with that eventually. But for the Ballinger pieces, it should remain a nature park. It should, you know, the, I'm sure some trees will come down. A lot of understory vegetation will be cleared to open the woods up a little bit and get rid of the trash and the invasive species and stuff. But, you know, we're looking at a relatively low impact. You know, as far as generating traffic, the, the parking lot is, is, uh, let's see, twelve, twelve paved spaces. And there's gonna be a grassed area in the event that more people do show up to use the park at one time. But even, even at twenty-four parking spaces, that's not anything that's going to, you know, tip the scales to require a traffic study or have, you know, make Fringer Road at one ninety-four a failing level of service for the intersection or it's not traffic that, that would be projected. It, it, it will put traffic on the road, I'm sure.
I understand.
But it, but it's not like we're putting Walmart there.
The road's already narrow enough that in certain parts, you know, people just have to pull off the road to get by.
Sure, I, I drive Fringer Road occasionally. I'm-
And if it's such gonna be a low estimated, only twelve parking spots or whatever, twenty-four at the max that you ever think. If it's gonna be such a low-use park, why is it gonna be built? Why can't, you know, the observatory be on that other parcel where it's already set up? There's already heavy flow. I mean, can't this money be better spent elsewhere?
It just seems like an awful lot of impact and an awful lot of money spent if we're gonna talk about twelve people getting to go walk through the woods. I mean, they can go to Contopton and they can walk all day.
At, at any given time.
Yeah.
So, and it's, again, it's, it's, um, and it's been the city's vision to, you know, have, have this nature park available for, you know, for folks to use.
You know, all of our property values, when you go punching these roads in and putting the parking lots and the lights that are gonna be up and that kind of stuff, it's gonna diminish, you know, all, the value of our properties. And it just sounds like it's just, you're gonna be, you're saying it's gonna be on such a small scale, but you're gonna do a lot more collateral damage than-
For the greater good impact.
Sure, and, and I, I won't argue the point that there will be impact, certainly there will be. It's, I mean, really, it's a park now. You know, anybody who wants to go out there and can figure out how to park,
No, I understand.
You know, can go out there and hike on city property.
Astrological society, every time they come, they park on our land and they walk through our yard and stuff like, they own the place. And then when you come out and tell them they need to move, Mr. Eric from in town, you know, he acts like he owns the place. And, you know, it, there's already been issues where he's out there stomping around where he knows he shouldn't be.
I mean, we have a young child and they're driving through and walking through.
There's already issues and we haven't even gotten started. And it's, you know-
I mean, for a young family starting out that bought a house, I mean, we just moved back to Tony Town two, two and a half years ago. And then to have all this go up and property values go down, people in our backyard. We moved out there to be safe. We moved out there for the quietness. We moved out there because we liked the country. We moved out of a development, development for a reason. I mean, and I know a lot of people here that live on that road too.
We appreciate your comments, and, and that's the reason we posted, so we get your attention to come in here and we'll take everything you say into consideration. And this is like, say, this-
Stay awake while I'm talking. This is ridiculous.
I mean, this is just one stage that we go through, so.
I'd like to say something else about this Ballinger Park thing. You gentlemen got saddled with a hosen. I've been living out on Fringer Road for almost thirty years now. I knew everyone on Fringer Road, oh, the old team on Fringer Road. The old team, I used to bale hay over on Ballinger's farm, help load the wagons. The only reason that Ballinger Park is where it is right now is because the town made a deal with the Ballingers that they would, if they gave them their stinking park land over there, that they could develop their farm. And the town didn't even realize, if they would've looked at the maps of the state roads there, that the state roadmap says there'd be no more off conveyances on that section. So the Ballingers hosed the town. And that's not the first time the town's been hosed. You guys are the second generation of, of what has, you're, you're the come afters. The deals that were made and, and like, not knowing that there is a right-of-way there, because I know it, because I have the land plots of the eight lots that come off of Fringer Road. And we're the last of the eight, and it was a half one left. So they, they built our house on the last two remainders. And there is a lot that goes right in, and everyone on that road, every night we walk and we conversate about it, knows that that is the piece of ground that was left to the Garrett Farm, and it, it's perfectly fine to come off the road there, a nice straightaway- Garrett Farm and it's perfectly fine to come off the road there, a nice straightaway, no impediments, no nothing. You had it staked off.
We did.
But why, why did it stop? And it's on the land platte, there's a land platte that shows every single house on that road that come off of Fringer Farm.
Okay, I think we've covered this, this area already. Is there anyone-
I don't know what, what your, what this new section is that you have the sign up there. What, what is that for? That, that was Blonder Church once and then they couldn't build on it, now you have a sign saying it's a zoning hearing about it. So what, now we are here to know what that's about, that section.
I mean, I'm, maybe, I mean, let's start, maybe we'll step back a step here. So the city is the applicant here, okay? The city of Tonny Town is the applicant. And I realize you feel you're at a city meeting, but let's use the guy who was here as the crematorium. He has a piece of property, he wants to do something with it in the city, and he has to go before this board to deal with the how-to-do things, okay? So the city, imagine as an entity, wants to do this part and it's just an idea right now. So they have to post the idea on the property to say, this is what we want to do, and they come before this board to talk about the how-to-do it. These guys up here don't get, make the decision of whether it happens or not, whether it's a good idea or not, that's the mayor and city council. So while, you know, you're not wasting your time coming here because you need to have them understand your concerns about traffic and all the things you said, this would be the first step if they wanted to do anything. So instead of looking at it as a negative, look at it as a positive where the city's saying, we want to do this. What do you think? And you guys came and kind of said what you think. But you also want to express that to the mayor and council because they're the ones that could say, oh, okay, we're not going to do it, or we're going to do something else. Like the crematorium guy, he could say, I'm going to do something, this, that, the other. It's not their call to determine that issue. So, I mean, this is what this is for, and when you ask, why are things posted, this is how it's supposed to start. And it may never get past this. You know, these comments will go to the city council and they may say, wow, you know, there's some problems, let's think about this. Or it may start to continue on and that's how the process works.
John in?
When is the meeting with the city council then that we would be able to address it?
You can come to any meeting if you want, and they, they meet on the second Mondays and the Wednesday before the second Monday. But if you wanted to make a special, I mean, but if you wanted to say, hey, we want to talk about Ballinger Park, they would put it on.
We thought this was where you address it, that's why-
This, this is exactly what you need to do.
And it's going to tell these people what we think, but who we really need to talk to is the mayor and the city council, so we need to know what that is.
And it's, it's both, and I'm sure you can get the information from the city manager, but I don't want you to think you shouldn't have come here because this is the first time I've ever seen the plan and heard that there's concerns or not concerns. I mean, you, you get the idea that this is the first step.
That's why it's a concept plan. Open, open to hear remarks and comments.
I have a rebuttal to that and I'll, I'll speak very briefly. When I came in to talk to this Jim, he said, you told me that the money's already in this year's fiscal budget, so it, it'll need to be started by June. So if this is the very beginning and the deciding whether we're going to do it or not, the money's already there and it's got to be done by June. So there's not going to be too much thinking about it.
That may or may not be the case, but the idea is that, I hate to pick on the crematorium guy, but he didn't think about doing the crematorium until he had the money saved to do it. And that's the way the city is, is that they think they have the money to do this and before that it wasn't worth going through the process. And once they hear concerns, they may say, you're right, we need to do this, or, you know, you talked about the fence, you're right, nobody thought about the fence. So it's really, I mean, I know everybody worries about the end product because that's what you should be worried about, but this is the first step and maybe nobody takes the journey after that. So we'll definitely get you the information, you can come to the city hall, and if there needs to be a discussion about the park with the council itself, that can be arranged. I mean, instead of just showing up and saying, we want to talk about it, we could be put on the agenda so they have the map, they know what's going on and they hear what's going on, so.
Well, I don't understand, I, I still don't understand why the change of zoning sign or whatever it was, meeting sign was way, way up the road. Did someone put it on you guys or?
Is it, it's on the parcel at the top, right?
Yeah, it's in the woods and that's-
It's up by the woods.
It's up by the woods.
It's like this and so it's saying like, yeah, if women went on, we wouldn't have seen it and it could be right next to our house.
Well, the sign is on the closest piece of the land to a road so you could see it. I didn't put the sign-
Should have been up the road.
Well, I didn't put the sign up.
It wasn't put there to be seen.
No, it wasn't, it was hidden.
It was parallel.
But you all saw it and you're here.
I know right next to the woods and I didn't see it till one of your guys had saw it.
Well, the snowplow knocked it over and he had to set it back up.
Where would you want us to put a sign for you?
All right, excuse me. Ma'am, please, if you want.
The rules require that they need to be putting it on the property and I am sure that when they said, what property is being most disturbed, it's the one where we're putting the road right in off of the street.
And that's my property, my husband's mine.
Well, if, I didn't put it on your property, I didn't-
I understand that, but it should have been, and we should have been, my name is Jennifer Ruby, my husband Wayne, three seven one one Fringer Road. It should have been there and it should have been something at the edge of one ninety-four and Fringer Road to say, look, we're doing something back here. You know, I have no problem with the park, everyone needs a park, I understand it. The road is going to be right next to my house in the woods. We have a dog, we've got cats, we have, we like our privacy. We moved out of the city to come out here to the country, to be away from all the riffraff and the bullcrap and the trash, not have light shining in our house at the middle of the night because of the park, not having people walking through our yard, not having a parking lot behind my house. This is ridiculous. I don't want to have people coming into my yard and interfering with our family time, with our family and our friends and just our own time and gawking at us, swimming in our pool, sitting in our yard. This is ridiculous. I have grandkids, I don't want them grandkids involved, my grandkids involved with strange other kids. You know, I don't worry about people coming into my yard and causing trouble at my house, I'm worried about the traffic, I'm worried about all that stuff. Put it, put the, put the entrance someplace else. I don't want to have to sell my house, I wanted to retire out there, I wanted to die out there, I'm ready to move. And that's the house, my husband bought me that house for our fifteenth wedding anniversary. I saw that house when I was a kid, I grew up in Reichers Town, my grandparents lived in Timonium. They used to come out and grab us kids and we'd go drive them all over the place and we used to come, you remember the Garrett Farm, it was a real nice place, thirty-some years ago, forty-two years ago, it was, it's getting, finally fixing up again, it's real pretty, used to come around that bend and I told my grandparents, you know what, when he stays, I'm going to live in that house. And then I forgot where the house was and going up to Gettysburg and then my husband found it in, where'd you find it? In a merchandiser. And I went, that's the house I want when I was a kid. And we went out and we bought it. Now I don't want the house anymore because of what you all are doing, that's not fair to us. It's not fair for any of us to live on Fringer Road. You're destroying our dreams. If you want it, fine, put it down off of one ninety-four, go across the creek, do whatever, don't destroy our dreams, don't make things tough on all of us. But we had to keep our stuff locked up, I never locked my house up, I never locked my vehicles up, I'm going to probably have to now. And that's what happens when you live in Baltimore City. I moved away from the, from Baltimore to be away from all this stuff.
Let me tell you how, let me tell you something where I live. I've lived in Tonny Town since nineteen fifty-five.
Great.
I don't have a fence around all four sides of my life.
Me neither.
It's the only way you can keep people off. You have to build a fence on all four sides of your property if you want people to stay off your property.
Well, I don't want fences in my property, I don't want to do that.
I've sat in the back of my sunroom with a sidewalk that comes from the street down along the side of my house. People act as though that belongs to the town. They'll come down and be close enough to my door that they get open the door into my sunroom while I'm sitting there having a soda. That's the way it is when you live wherever you live. If there's an opportunity for people to walk through your property, they're going to walk through your property.
We don't have that problem because we live out in the middle of the-
Well, I have, I have that property.
Well, you live in the city, I live in the, we live in, we live in the country.
You choose to live there, Paul.
Yeah.
We didn't decide to live in the city, that's why I live where we live now.
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to comment, that's all.
You know, all this riffraff that we're going to end up having.
And the trash and the traffic and the lights, yeah.
And you know about that trash.
People getting in on my pool.
I've seen that trash.
We, we understand your concern.
And the sign you put up is parallel with the road. Nobody knew about it until Mr. Perry came and said something to me, I said stuff to all the neighbors. The sign is parallel with the road, people going by, they wouldn't see it until I told them, all the neighbors. I yanked it out of the ground, put it against a tree.
Oh, yeah, but Callie, they-
I sort of took it and put it on the very beginning of Fringer Road because you have put it in there to make sure nobody was going to know about it, it's hush, hush. You would have more people here if it wasn't, if you had posted it properly and bigger of a sign. It's not bigger than this piece of paper, it wasn't big at all.
I have a picture of him, you know-
You know, the way you all post stuff, like trying to keep it hush, hush, it's all wrong.
I moved out of there because I grew in the development in Reichers Town. I have, I don't have fencing in my yard for a reason. My dog likes to run into the woods, I don't live in the development and I don't have neighbors, I don't need a fence. So now I have to put a fence up to keep people out of my property, out of my, away from my pool, away from everything and that's not fair to us. That's just not fair to us. Me moved out there to get away from the stuff and not have a shove up our butts.
I understand your concern.
Did you got law property?
Well, if you understand, then you can find another place to put it.
Well, we'll, like I say, all this we'll take in consideration, I understand about the fence, I understand about your privacy, living out in the country, so all that we'll take in consideration. Like I say, tonight's point is a concept plan to bring it out on the floor for everyone to be aware. I don't understand why the sign wasn't put so you could read it as you're driving down the road.
We fixed it, we fixed it, we all can see it now.
Okay. So like I say, this is the first step, so we appreciate your input.
And the thing with the conservation people, a couple of years ago, they came and they talked with Tasha and Josh and Kelly and said, well, when we have our little powwows, we would like you guys to keep the lights down. What the hell? If I want to flood my house with all kinds of floodlights in the middle of the night and have big bonfires, I'm going to do it. It's my property, I don't give a damn if we want to stargaze and look all the lights and stuff, whatever, I don't give a rat's ass.
All right, thank you, thank you, ma'am. That's, let's move on with this, I think we've covered most of the items.
They're hanging back there.
That's all right. There's a motion on the floor to approve the concept plan. Not hearing any other comment from the commission here, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that pose. Excuse me?
Pose.
Okay, we've got one pose. Got that, Jim? Just carry it. All right. Thank you, folks, for, for coming here tonight. Our meetings are always open to the public and, I mean, we've got a number of ways to see what's going on. Posting of the sign, I'm sorry the sign wasn't posted where more people could see it, but, but I'm glad to see you here tonight. So just remember, you're welcome.
I've had my hand out twice.
All right, sorry I missed you, come to-
I just, a few comments, my name's Phil Cole.
Come to the mic.
Phil Cole, eleven forty-one, forty-eight Bullfrog Road. I was wondering if there was a traffic impact studied on. Has anybody done one? I, I don't know where you could plant an entrance.
And I'm not getting across to everybody, this is very step one that has to happen. So nobody, nobody can do a traffic study until they find out what they want to do there. So the Civil War study, the traffic study, the tree study, that has to happen, this is a-
You're going to make it happen, correct, you're going to do one.
Yeah, this is just the first-
Yes, correct, I understand that, but I, I don't understand how you could pick the entrance if you didn't do the study.
Nobody here picked any of this, okay?
That's not in stone, you're saying, that entrance is not in stone.
The engineer that did that is not here to do it.
Sure, sure, I understand that.
What, what has to happen, and I guess, Mr. Chairman, just give me a couple of seconds, is that maybe this isn't the right way to do it. Maybe it should be big ball fields with high lights and stuff like that, right? That's what they could have suggested and that would have come here the same way and you guys could have come and said, this is horrible for X, Y, and Z, I mean, there's, but no matter what, this would be the first time that it would have been rolled out. And what I'm hearing is that, you know, the concept as it sits moves through the process, there needs to be a time where you can come to the decision-makers because not one of the people in this room can decide whether or not to do this. That's not them, okay? Same seats, but different people.
But it just sounds like you're set on using that entrance versus any other entrance. That's why I thought maybe a study first, you know.
And what needs to happen to answer your questions, because I'm not capable of it, I have the biggest mouth here, I guess, is we need to have a presentation where you can hear what the engineer says, this is why I chose this or that, and then you can tell them all your concerns and you can tell the mayor and council who makes the decision and maybe they're going to say, wow, we didn't consider that.
So hypothetically, we're all arguing over a plan that might not exist, is what I'm saying.
That's the point, this is the first time it's been on paper.
Right.
Correct.
And I applaud you, I mean, I'm not trying to diminish anybody's comments because if you don't show up and say these things, nobody hears, nobody was against the crematorium, right? So we figure it's okay. That's what we need to hear and don't worry, we'll tell our bosses, hey, guess what happened last night at the meeting, you need to do something about this.
Okay, thank you.
Just, real quick point of clarification, there, there may not be a formal traffic study done, it, it will, that'll be determined by how many trips are likely to be generated from the park, so if, if it's not a huge number of trips, the city's probably not going to spend thousands and thousands of dollars on a traffic study if there's only going to be, you know, twenty trips in the peak hour or something like that.
Who determines that?
So, that'll be-
That board determines that, they determine.
Are they as far as on?
No, they'll determine what needs to be done as the plan gets more fulfied. So they'll say to, to you, to my crematorium guy, hey, we want to know how many cars are going in and out, we want to study on that. Or they can say, one funeral a day, we already kind of figured it out. You get the idea, they'll weigh that as this gets more tangible.
Independent person do that?
The study is done by independent companies, not, you know, they're-
But you're saying you don't, you're not going to spend the money.
That's unknown.
You're telling me?
I'm saying that, I'm saying that may not happen because it may not generate enough traffic to warrant that.
But who's the target? What's traffic doing?
Will.
I mean, damn.
There are, there are trip generation, charge based on usage and all that sort of stuff.
I understand what they're saying, I mean-
For, for the development that's going to occur like out at Meads Crossing, this group here said, you have to do a traffic study. And then a traffic study, a traffic engineer, a guy that knows, that went to school for this, does it, okay? And what the city manager's saying is, it's not a guaranteed part of the process, after everybody finds out what's going on, these people make the determination of whether it needs to be done and then, then they order it done.
So if there's more traffic, we can come back to you and say, hey, you got the wrong numbers, right?
After the plan gets more solidified, you come to them and say, we want traffic studies done, that, and that's how it's done.
All right, we'll do one more comment on this, sir.
When will be the next meeting inside? Have you decided a date for the next meeting?
Well, next meeting, depending on which, what you wanted to do, would be the city's workshop meeting.
Right, I'm on with this.
This one here? Ours is the last Monday of every month, but it may not be, we may not have Ballinger Park on there, on the agenda. If progress isn't made along the line, we may not, it may not be on the agenda for the next month.
So we got to show up every meeting?
No. No, it's posted on, the agenda's posted, and you can go on the web and get the agenda.
Well, they post it down here at the front door to Allen's Street.
There's a glass out front. Every Monday, it's posted. You can look to see if it's gonna be Monday night, and last Monday of the month.
The agendas are also generally posted on the city's website, uh, the Wednes, by, we try to get them up the Wednesday before the meeting, uh, before the Monday night meeting. So, it's just, uh, tonytown.org is the city's website, and, um, you can view the agendas on there. Now, once, once a project is, is introduced and in the pipeline, so to speak, it's on the agenda just as, um, discussion of active projects. It'll be on that, that segment every month until the project is done. But if there's going to be, um, you know, more of an actual presentation on it, like if we get the next, when the next stage of the plan is ready to be presented to this group, it'll be listed as a, a delegation or an action item. So, as I said, it'll, Hollinger Park will be on the agenda every month from now until the time that it's done, just as an active project. But there will be, you know, two or three, maybe more opportunities, when there's going to be more of a presentation. It'll go up on the easel, and we'll talk specifically about that. Otherwise, it'll just be like a quick, you know, "We got this comment from this agency," and, you know, just like the one or two line mention, otherwise. So, I just, just so you know what, what's to look for if you check those agendas.
And the next council meeting that you would be able to voice comments is February 6th, and then March 6th after that. And there's a time for public comment for items that are on the agenda and aren't on the agenda. So, you show up one of those times, you'll be able to talk, and you'll get three minutes. And I can tell you, just to coach you, they're not interested in how the sign was posted. They're not interested in that. They'd wanna hear your concerns that you expressed tonight about why you want it, what's the story, why you don't want it, and.
Well, from the get-go, that's wrong with the sign. You should have had new sign, first of all, in the city.
But what I'm saying is.
What I'm saying.
You have three minutes to talk when you get up there, and if you're telling them about the sign, that's where, I'm just trying to say, is that you need to come to the meetings and tell the people that make the decisions, "I have a concern about X, Y, and Z, and I'm telling you how to do about, to get your information across." That's all.
All right. Moving on. Ordinances and agreements, there isn't any tonight. Uh, Jim, you wanna give your, uh, your report? Give me a second to bond.
Okay. Uh, just a couple of things. Let's see, we already, uh, talked about the crematory and, and obviously the Hollinger Park, as well as the bike and pedestrian plans, so I won't get back into those. Um, I would like to share the outcome of the Tony Town Crossing Board of Appeals hearing. The hearing was, was rather lengthy. I know, uh, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to, it finally went up on YouTube, I think, late this afternoon. But the hearing was, was roughly five, five hours long. Um, the applicant provided, uh, a great deal of in-depth testimony, brought in a number of, uh, folks that were recognized as experts for the, um, for the applicant. And, uh, there was a lot of, a lot of citizen input. Uh, most of it was not pertaining to the items that the board was actually tasked with reviewing as far as the criteria for the actual special exception use. But folks were very passionate in their opinions on the matter. But ultimately, the, uh, the board found that the criteria for granting the special exception were met. And they did grant the special exception for the, um, semi-detached dwellings, uh, reduction from three parking spaces to two per dwelling, and also for the ten-unit garden apartment. So, I expect that we'll be seeing a concept plan for that, um, not too far after the time that the case decision is, is, uh, approved by the chairman and the appeal period is, is over. So, that will be probably coming your way in the next few months as far as a concept plan for that project. The Meads Crossing, uh, yard variances that we talked about last month, because the first hearing went on until about 12:30 in the morning, uh, the second hearing was postponed, so we'll have to reschedule that one. So, um, I'm.
We don't have a date for that yet.
We don't have a date for that yet, but I'm, I'm guessing it will be, uh, by mid-February, if we can put that together. So, um, that's really about it for me.
Okay. I'm gonna move on into the active projects.
Okay. Let's see. Uh, Meads Crossing is chipping away. Uh, they pulled four more building permits for single-family homes out there. I'm not sure if anybody has taken the opportunity to go out and explore a little bit, maybe on the weekend when things aren't real busy out there at the site. But, um, it's coming along. The, the Crimson Avenue is paved, um, at least base course paving. Uh, Gaines Mill Circle, uh, Meads Avenue, you know, the, the streets are taking shape out there. And, uh, I suppose at this point, there are about nine homes, uh, for which construction has started. It's, it's interesting to actually go through the area after seeing it on paper for, for probably the last ten or eleven years, uh, to see it actually starting to take shape, take shape in the field.
Why, don't, before we jump off of that.
Yeah.
Um, I was under the impression that the, um, townhouses was gonna be stair-step, one in, one out, one in, one out. Not each one going back two feet as they go, from the first to the last. So, there's a, from the front one to the back, there's a ten-foot, and that's completely different from what was presented to us.
Yeah. Some, some of the sticks have that more alternating, like fore and aft, back and forth, and others, I guess, depending upon the, the, the way the lots were laid out, some of them, yeah, stair-step back consistently. So, but it, it, it varies from cluster to cluster.
Okay. Well, I was really disappointed the way it looked with this two-foot step back. And certainly, and that's not what's on the drawing on the public hearing either.
But they've changed them so many times.
Well, yeah. And I think what they had told us was that there is a two-foot jog between each unit.
Right.
But not specifically.
Front, back, front, back.
Right.
Not stair-stepped all the way down.
Right.
Was there anything done about the window versus a door on the first floor in the back for access to the lawn?
Not that I'm.
Anything ever come out of that?
Not that I am aware of. I was hoping to hear something about that.
Are we gonna hear anything about that?
At that appeals case, at that variance case, but since that was postponed, um, we didn't hear if the builder has, uh, taken that to heart and decided to offer that or make that a standard feature or not. I can, I can follow up with, with, uh, with Bob Ward Homes and see if they've given some consideration to that.
Says as a regular, he didn't offer the door. He said that here that night as.
No, he didn't offer it, but the others said that he.
It should be there.
He said that he would try to get it if.
Well, that was the developer, but that's not Bob Ward.
First group that's up there now, it looks like, it appears like there's gonna be a sliding door, 'cause there's a wide opening, big enough for a sliding door, not just a window.
But the major house there now is, isn't that a single family that's there now, though? That's just a spec house there now.
No.
Right?
I'm talking about the, there's what, five or six there in a connected?
Townhouses.
Townhouses.
Yeah.
And each one of those has, looks like a five or a six-by-six opening in the back.
I didn't see that.
Instead of a window.
Instead of a window.
I missed that.
So, maybe they made the change.
Maybe they made the change, yeah.
But like I say, my concern was a stair-step, which.
I know we wanted the change, but I didn't know whether we could get it or not.
All right. Go ahead, Jim.
Um, not a whole lot more to report, really. Meadowbrook is still chipping away. Um, nothing on the Tannery Barn at this point. They haven't submitted any, um, any change of use request or anything like that so far. Not, not much really to update on the construction fee stuff.
Any reason we can't wrap some of these up? I mean, Evapco sheets, uh, Georges, I mean, Carol Vista?
Well, Carol Vista's.
Pardon me?
They're still holding their money on all these.
Right.
So, we can take them off, but they're not really done.
And don't take them off.
They're not done because of the maintenance agreement. So, they'll be on there for two years?
Why can't we get them, why, why, why can't we get it finished?
Well, the maintenance agreement goes on for two years, right?
Usually, we, we keep them on until, until everything has been wrapped up, including returning, um, their, closing their escrow account and, and.
Why can't we get those closed off?
We don't want to.
Now, I know we don't, but why can't they finish off?
They have to post the money with us for two years, even if there's nothing wrong with the place. They still, we still hold it as a guarantee. So, like, we're at that point with Carol Vista, that they're finished construction and ready to go into maintenance. Creekside, they've been done with construction, and they're about ready to leave the maintenance. So, if you don't want this changed about how it's presented, but we still, all these projects are still.
Well, if they're still on there because of that, that's fine. I mean, it just didn't seem like we were whittling the, you know, down any.
And unfortunately, what, what has happened in a couple of instances is I think that there are a couple on here that are.
Still have work to be done?
That the maintenance period is, is, is over. And, um, I've been talking about some of these with, with our treasurer. We're gonna do a little outreach to some of these that we believe should be completely closed out because they're through the maintenance period, um, and see if we can prompt them to take the next step. Usually, the, the final steps are at the, the developer requests that their escrow account be closed and things like that. And I think we've run into a couple of situations where, by the time we get through the maintenance period, um, either, you know, people have moved on or in different roles, and then the developer doesn't contact the city with the request as the public works agreement dictates to, you know, close things out. So, we're, we're hoping to do some outreach to a few of these and see if we can whittle the list down. And also, that would, um, also reduce the number of, uh, projects that we still are holding on our developer escrow and, um, developer billing worksheets every month. So, we, we have some incentive to try to close out the ones that are, that are through the maintenance period already. So, it's, it's, at this point, just a matter of when, when everybody can manage to get the time to reach out for the folks who really should be contacting us.
What about Brewery Far?
Nothing, nothing from them yet. I will touch base with our economic development director and see if she's heard any, any news on it. Um, maybe I'll shoot an email out to them, too. But they haven't submitted any, any kind of concept drawings or anything yet. Haven't applied for any zoning certificates either.
Okay. They, they had to get their approval, right? Alcohol approval or something like that? Have that been accomplished yet?
I don't know if they have received that license.
They're trying to get some investors, too, to help get on board to do, to do what they wanna do.
Okay. That's all I had then, Jim.
Mr. Park, could I intercede here about?
Please, please, come to the mic.
I have been over to Meads Crossing four times to get a problem straightened out. Finally got it straightened out. Our house overlooks Piney Creek, and it's nothing like going to the bridge and seeing half the side of the creek red muddy and half of it clear. So, I go over to Meads Crossing. They're sharing the same stormwater pond that they supposed to have their own. They're sharing the same one with Meadowbrook temporarily. And then they have a sediment pond. Well, the sediment pond is red mud that they have to let it set and then pump the sediment pond through straw bales or, in their case, a big bladder that holds sediment. Went over it, worked for a while. The guy, the sediment control guy, that is their sediment control guy, which is like the fox watching the hen house, 'cause I had to call the environmental people in Hagerstown to come down before they'd done anything about dumping this sediment into Piney Creek, 'cause it comes right down past our house. And I went over about three or four times, and then finally, they've got it under hand now. I will say they did, but you talk about changing plans. I've got the plan, and I showed it to Mr. Mayor down here, and they are not going by their plan. They are not having their own stormwater ponds like they supposed to. They're not doing the sediment ponds properly. They're pumping their sediment into Meadowbrook's stormwater pond. And then it's coming out into Piney Creek. And then they, they, I get on their case, they get their act together, right? They're pumping it into a big bladder, probably size this blue rug. All the sediment's being kept in that blue bag, and then the clear water's running out, and it goes on down in the little stream, and then into Piney Creek. Well, it don't do any good when you have a six-inch hose with four big holes and it's squirting water up in the air. It's not even going through there. And they had to stop pumping it there again, too. So, please, do not let them get away with bloody murder out there, because they, they do not have the sediment control that they supposed to have. They do not have the stormwater ponds they supposed to have. And the only thing that's gonna save Piney Creek is the fact that they're on the upper side of the railroad, and the arch in the bridge is only that high, and the mud water can only get so high and go through there so fast. But they have listened to what the environmental people have said in Hagerstown. But the sediment man out there, I went to him four times, they got the matter straightened up. But I personally walked over there, and I did not see any stormwater ponds. Now, a stormwater pond holds all the runoff in the streets. The sediment pond is what they put in while they're building their houses. Well, that thing was the reddest mud you ever saw in your life, and they would pump it directly right into Piney Creek, coming right down in through my woods and into Piney Creek. And they got it, they got it straightened out now, but I can't see how, after doing something like that, you can believe anything that contractor says.
All right. Thank you. Jim, look into that. Okay. Thanks.
We've, yeah, we've, we've had a number of complaints with regard to, um, runoff from both Meadowbrook and Meads Crossing, so we've been working with the county, um, on that. When, when the inspector has gone out a number of times, um, at one point, they found that someone had, and nobody's fessed up to it, of course, but someone had boarded up the notch in the weir wall at the, um, Stormwater Associates Pond that everybody thinks of as the Meadowbrook Pond. Um, that pond is actually a regional pond that's supposed to serve both the Meads Crossing and Meadowbrook communities. Um, and they're, you know, none of the plants called for blocking up that, that notch in the weir wall, um, you know, but that was causing some, that was causing the water level to rise beyond the bales and, um, you know, and silt fence and everything at the pond. So, that was taken care of, uh, after one of the relatively recent heavy rains. Um, I guess this is probably over a month now. Um, but we did have other instances where, while the site was in compliance, according to the erosion and sediment control inspector, um, it looked like the measures that were approved by the, um, State Soil Conservation District by, um, by the, by the plan reviewer there, um, that just because of the extreme rainfalls we've had, that the controls that were put in place with the approved plan just were not adequate for the amount of rain we've had. And, um, that, that led to some of the, the muddy runoff coming off of the site. But, um, they've, you know, they've tried to take measures to mitigate that as best they can. So, but it's been an ongoing issue every, you know, every several heavy rains, we have another issue pop up out there. But the county, you know, comes out and, and tries to work through it and get it addressed. So, um, just a work in progress.
Okay. Thank you. Jay?
I've got a couple of things going on. First, the Creekside project is down to the point where the city has released the letter of credit to a maintenance level. And since their project has been in the ground forever, it seems like we're only gonna do a one-year maintenance instead of a two-year maintenance bond. So, all the things have been inspected, and the deeds have been signed, and everything that we have all talked about is finally gonna happen with the transfers. The only thing to bring to your attention is the, the parcel that we talked about connects 140 to, uh, the break iron where the sidewalk is. That is going to, the city will have the easement for the sidewalk. The city will have an easement where they can run pipes or anything we wanna do, and an easement to make sure that the plannings that are there, which were supposed to be on the water tower site, remain and are maintained. But the actual parcel is gonna be joined with the, um, the house that's there, the, um, that was bought. It changed owners since we've had it. The Wilson, Wilson Bowns owns it now. So, that will be part of that parcel, so that it's all one, so, 'cause the city didn't wanna take that. So, Creekside is at the point where it's finally gonna be over in a year. It'll be done, so. Uh, the second item is the, the Board of Zoning Appeals Hearing on the old sheets for the packaged liquor store. It occurred back in November. You remember, it was quite a contentious hearing. It was a rehearing, actually. And, uh, that opinion was refined and refined and refined, and it was finally issued by the chairman on January 22nd. So, it's a thirty-day appeal period, and so we'll see whether the people who were protesting will appeal by February 22nd.
There was something in the paper about the liquor board.
Liquor board has to do, remember, they transferred the license from what is called the whiskey basket, they transferred the ownership of the license from whoever owned it to the person that owns it now that wants to move here. They have to transfer the location of the license from that place to here. My understanding is that's where there will be another issue of, of fighting, that the city won't be involved, so. And then lastly, you might have heard, and I feel sorry if you have, about small cell towers, it's called the 5G network, and I could tell you more than you ever wanted to know about that, but most of the issue is the fact that local authority about the placement of these, the cost of these, in the right of ways, has been taken over by the FCC. They said that you really don't have a lot of local authority. That's a generalization, they gave you some parameters of how they had to do things, and there's still a bill pending with the Maryland legislature of whether the Maryland will take further authority away from the locals. But the bottom line is, by April 16th, we need to have an ordinance in place that's going to regulate them to the extent we can, and if we have to change it, we have to change it. And I won't, the details are irrelevant at this point in time, but it's the things that you would be interested in, that we talked about a year and a half ago, of how high can they be, where can they be, what kind of positions can they be taken, can they be put in developments that don't have poles in them already, there's going to be an attempt to deal with that.
So they can put one on every light pole?
Well, that'll be one of the things that'll have to be discussed, exactly, and the question is, who's light pole? Ours, the state highways, that gets in there. The issue that we're going to have is because of the FCC's ruling, is not necessarily the content, right, of how high and things like that, it's the timing for review, and they have what they call a shot clock, and without getting into the details, it's simply this, if they bring an application in, an entity has so many days, and I'm talking like in weeks, like maybe 21 days, to review it and say yes or no. If they don't say yes or no within that time period, then it's a considered yes. That doesn't work, okay? It doesn't work for us, doesn't work for anyone, and it doesn't matter, the FCC said the shot clock is going to be the shot clock. So we may have to come up with some procedures as we move forward, again, we, we, the people that were interested in doing it have now not been seen for a while. That's more economics than, than here, but we may have to have some type of administrative advance review, meaning that if something comes in and it hasn't hit the agenda time period, or you've already met, or something like that, there may have to be a special committee that's pulled together for these things, that can review them and make some comments on them. But like I said, our hands are going to be tied a lot, and this is going to be an important thing, because people will see them right outside their windows. So by April 16th, that's going to get adopted, we're going to talk about it hopefully in February, introduce something in March, have it adopted in April, and fix it as we go. Okay? That's all I have.
Claire, anything else for us?
Yeah, I have one quick update, the triennial date, the water and sewer plan is going for public hearings on next Thursday, February 7th, on the 21st, it will be back in front of the county commissioners for adoption. At the end of February, it will be sent to MDE, if it is adopted by the county commissioners on the 21st, and then MDE has five months max to review it. So we're looking at comments slash approval in mid, early to midsummer, I'm excited.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, thanks. Any, any comments from the commissioner up here? Jim, you have any?
No.
George?
I just wanted to mention about YouTube's, I, I watch YouTube on some of these meetings, and the mics are an important issue during these meetings. Sometimes you can't hear someone over here on, on YouTube, and it's because it either don't stay, or someone should be, someone should monitor everyone while they use a, a mic, to make sure it's coming through. I see the county commissioners are not even going to have written minutes anymore, they're going to go to recordings. Maybe we'll do that someday, and if you can't hear, you're not going to be able to hear these things. Just wanted to mention it. And regarding, without fences around your property, I have people walking through my property every week, right where I'm sitting in my back sunroom, and they could even reach over and open my door to my sunroom. That's the way people are today, and I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, anyone from the floor have any other comments? Okay, our next meeting is February the 25th, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Who?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal five, stand aye.
Aye.
Who's carried? Thank you. Again, thank everyone for showing up tonight.